This evening in lieu of doing our second traditional business meeting of the month, we are, we've elected to do a workshop format where we'll be discussing the proposition of a youth council here in Sykesville. And so to get started, we'll say that I pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thanks, everybody. So I'll hand this off to Joe to get us started, or is there anything? Okay, so right over to, how's the one we dropped? Good deal. And everybody has the, either on their laptops or on their screens, so we're good.
You can just follow along.
Yeah, so yeah, did everyone get the?
Yep.
Yes. So as part of when I decided to run for town council, I was looking at kind of some of the needs in the town and felt like what we're missing is that kind of voice of young adults. And was feeling like there might be a really good opportunity to connect the council with that voice in a way that would be meaningful to the work that we do. So we've been looking, Jo and I have been looking at kind of what does that mean? What does a youth council mean? What other places in Maryland even have them? And how would it benefit us? And so what I want to go over today is kind of to give everyone that information and then for us to decide kind of how we want to proceed at the end. So we have a list of questions and kind of things we want to work through. And so, and then you also got all the attachments, I think, for like where the information came from, if there are other questions or things like that. So to start off with, just really again, that connection between the communities. And youth are anywhere roughly identified from middle school up until like what's considered transitional age youth, so like 23, 24, and anywhere in that span. So it's really a way to give us the benefit of that voice in the decisions that we would be making, so that we're not just making them kind of from our perspective, but kind of getting that voice involved in what we're doing. And so a town, and at any point, feel free to interrupt or ask questions or... So a youth council, you can see here, it's just a group with this, a group of youth with this common goal, usually around leadership. So it would not only be a way to advise us, but also a way to build skills that we don't currently have an avenue for youth in our community who want to get civically involved, you know, to a pathway, per se. So it's a way to develop those youth leadership skills, strengthen our community, also increase volunteerism, because you have youth advocating for an activity or participation and then directly asking peers for their involvement as opposed to adults kind of soliciting that involvement. And it can be through a variety of different types of initiatives, whether it's determined that, you know, it's a task force, they do this one thing and they're going to advise on this one thing, or they're going to be a standing committee, you know, that will advise on a variety of things. But really, it's that service-oriented focus. So it gives youth in our communities that don't have an avenue right now to get involved, a really clear pathway. And so this is just a variety of different things that we've found that youth have been involved in, in youth councils. So, you know, that beginning piece of raising issues to us of what the youth are concerned about or seeing, I think without a formal process, one of the best examples we have here is the skate park. And, you know, that there wasn't a process for youth to get that, you know, in front of the council, but they did. And I was very passionate about it. I think it's been a huge success in terms of partnership and, for him, I drive by, it's one of the most utilized.
Very frequent, yes.
Yeah, and that came directly from the youth. And so it's, I think we have the opportunity to do even more like that. But it can be training, it can give people that, give young adults the experience of public speaking, of learning how to advocate, of getting more involved in the beginning of civic duty and, you know, I think that, for me, there was also, and I think we've all talked about it, the low turnout in terms of voters here and if, you know, kids can start, you know, voting at 18, so how we get that voice involved in what we're doing, I think can also benefit us. But you can see out here, you know, training, developing speakers, days of service, offering advice. There are some that are directly connected even just to Parks and Rec, and there are some that are just leadership trainings, that then they get, you know, kind of mayor for a day and get exposure to things versus giving advice. We also included in the attachments for you, a larger Excel spreadsheet to show you what kind of the different towns in Maryland are doing. So there is a governor's youth council. If anyone saw on the news about a month ago, we've had our first Carroll County youth actually appointed to, out of Westminster, appointed to the governor's youth council. Now, from what I can see, none of the town youth councils are connected to the work of the governor's youth council. And that might be, if we get involved in becoming a youth and developing our youth council, something that I would probably say we might want to look at advocating for and, you know, once we're up and running it a little more solid, because I think there's a benefit to having our voice at the table, even if we don't, you know, because there are only so many youth that can be on the council themselves. But if it's established and if they're working smoothly, then I think that's another avenue for us to get what's going on in Carroll County in front of the governor. So, like I said, you can see kind of a variety of different ones here, but you guys have the Excel spreadsheet that gives you a much more detail into even how it's structured. So in everything that we found, it's these four areas in terms of when you start to set it up, right? What's the setting? What's the structure? What's the strategy? The goal for the participation? And then what's the support from the adults in terms of making sure that it functions? So anywhere from running it to being mentors to actually just not even, you know, to not having a vote and just showing up to, you know, support the structure of it. And that also, when we get into it, will be a discussion of what is our capacity to support as well, because we want to make sure that whatever we structure, it has a longevity past us and is sustainable. But at the end of the day, that bottom piece for me, I think, is what's really important, that we find value in the youth voice and we continue to support that. And that, because I think when the council supports that, you know, as opposed to just kind of a cursory, we checked a box, they said something, but if we really believe as a council in the value, then that gets, it gets, you know, multiplied in terms of what they can do. And so this comes as well from some of the, some of the resources that we gave you. But when you start to look at getting those things in place, then it's how do we set these eight steps up? And that's what's kind of in the next group of slides. So to make it work, and that, you know, it's how do we set that home base, design the outreach structure, and then move into both the philosophy and core values, but also that activity, capacity, engagement components? And then that sustainability is what's going to be really important going forward. And when you start to look at that, we have to decide these things. Who's in it? What the structure is? What environment are they working in? In other words, is it regular meetings? Is it, do we only convene them when we want a question answered? You know, is it a task force? Is it connected just to Spark or is it just connected to the historic district or, you know, decisions about Warfield or building, you know, things like that? And then building up that capacity, motivating them, and then engaging in those ongoing opportunities. So do we actively make sure that that Carroll County youth voice is at the governor's table, right? Do, how much do we, outside of our city or outside of the town, or do we just kind of keep it all internally? And so then this gives you kind of those steps that we want to take. And for me, this connects, as we look at these, to the questions at the back of the presentation that we'll get to. At the end of the day, we need to decide, what do they want to decide and what do we want a task force? Because at the end of the day, I think that's what we really need to do, is get a group of committed citizens. We have a recommendation of who that would look like. How much of this do we want to answer for them and say, these are the parameters that we want you to advise us in? Or do we want to just say to them, to a task force, like, you go answer all these questions and figure it out and come back to us with a recommendation? So the things that they'd be looking at, right, is determining what it is, how we recruit, what the setup is, what the infrastructure, what the support looks like, and then how, is it ongoing? What's the sustainability plan for it in terms of moving forward? And then that's where we get into these kinds of things. Again, back to like, how much do we want to provide, like, this is what the council wants it to look like? Or how much do we want to say, you know, carte blanche, go forth, assess kind of what's in the community, what the need in the community is, and bring back a full recommendation to us?
And that ACE initiative, is, does that stand for like youth coalition or something?
Yeah, Adolescent and Youth Council.
I thought it was all you can eat, but...
Yes.
I forgot the U.
Offended, up, down, I think youth engage, council engagement, there we go.
Okay.
That comes from the MML model.
National League of Cities.
Yeah, but when you go to the MML page to look for youth stuff, this is what MML refers us to. So yeah, everyone has their own, like acronym or like whatever you want to call it. But yeah, so these are what, what is kind of, again, going back to like, this is what's going to take, right? We have to make it sustainable. What are the costs affected? What's the benefit to the town? What's the missing ingredient in the town? For me, I think the missing ingredient's the voice. But how that voice comes in front of us, I think, is for us to decide, if that makes sense. And so, you know, we can talk all day long about like all the details of it, but at the end of the day, I think this is really what we need to do. We need to decide, you know, we need to get a group, a committed group that touches all the different ages and, you know, areas in our community and task them with, this is what we want to know and these are the limits that we, you know, have, whether there are budget limits, whether there's staffing limits, whether we only want it connected to Park and Rec, whether the council's open to a voice, you know, an advisory board level. And then they can come back with, you know, these are the terms and this is, you know, do people get appointed? Do they apply? You know, those kinds of things.
Can you explain the voice a little bit more? What you mean by that?
The voice here?
Yeah, you said there...
In terms of representative, so I'm a big believer that we shouldn't do things for people, we should do them with people. And so, but we don't have an avenue regularly to hear from our middle school, our high school, and our young adults as to what their issues are, what their concerns are. So that's the voice that I think we're missing. If, does that, you know? So the recommendation is that we get a task force together. My thoughts would be these types of members, that we get a representative from the high school, we get from Century High School. Because one of the questions is, we have a small plot of land in Carroll County, right? And all we have influence over is what, what happens here in town. But we have a lot of people from Eldersburg, from Sykesville, from, you know, that come into our town. And so do we only want the voice from students who are residents in our town? Or do we want anyone who's at Century High School or anyone who's at, you know, Sykesville Middle or, because those are, those pull from different areas around us. But I think we need the voice of the high school, I think we need the voice of the middle school and the voice of the community college. And those, all of those also have leadership-type programs within them that we potentially could tap into. So, you know, do we just want a representative from the student councils? You know, that's another way to go in terms of pulling kids in that have already said they want to be civically involved, they're already involved in their schools. Or we want a broad, a broader net. And then representatives from us, as well as the police department, and then youth and parents and business owners, I think, in, in the town, so that we can get a nice cross-section of who would be influenced by having this in our town. And then I think what we need to do is establish a timeline, like, do we want to give that task force three weeks, five months, 10 years? Like, what's the limit that we want back? And I think what we need from them are, who's going to be in it? You know, what's the age range? Are we talking high school, college? Are we talking middle school, high school? You know, when it would start? What tools do we either want them to use to establish what's already out there and what's going on in the town or what's, what the need is? Or do we want them to establish that? And then, you know, a report back to the mayor and to the council in terms of their findings for us then to decide, you know, after they do that research, what, what makes them most sense. And so these would be what I would say we want the task force, kind of those same kind of questions, but just kind of more specifically asked. And I think my, my hope for us today would be to look at these lists, to look at kind of what's been out there, to agree if everyone is in agreement to set, to set up the task force and who the representation should be. Timeline, I think we're probably looking at something starting in February. We're going to the holidays to be realistic, to get it announced that we are doing the task force and to give people time to kind of clear their schedules to do it. I think we'd probably be looking at a kickoff of February. So then, you know, is it six months after that saying that we want to report back to the council? But that's kind of, so for today, from my perspective, making sure we have the right questions on the table, making sure that you all are comfortable with us starting a task force, you know, with clear guidance to them, this is what we want you to come back to us with.
So who would identify the players on the task force from the certain entities like Century High, Sykesville Middle, Carroll Community College, parents, youth, business owners? Obviously, like, if, if, if there's to be a representative from each of these entities on a task force, then I guess I would look to you to identify, to create the task force.
And I can do that. I don't want to be the sole voice without guidance from the group on what you, so if this, if you're comfortable with this list, then yes, I can reach out to each of those entities to get a representative.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about task force, who, who we would see as being part of that task force. I think this list, you know, at first glance makes, makes good sense. I don't know if it needs to be less or more broad, but the, the idea would be then that the task force would be created under your, your guidance, correct? And then what you're looking for then from the council is to help establish the...
The parameters.
So for the task force?
For the task force, yeah.
And those...
And the timeline. So those would be, first of all, what's the timeline? Like how, I don't think this should drag out forever.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think...
Right, so I think, you know, six months, three months, something that's like focused
Okay.
And then done.
Yeah.
And then, you know, are these questions that are at the back, everything you want to know, are there limits that people want to put on, you know, that the group feels like we want to have on the task force? Or is it, you know, go figure it out and come back with a recommendation?
Have you, for those who, that ran six months ago and knocking on doors and stuff, is there the youth in the community that want to participate? I mean, it, because there's no reason to do a task force if we're not going to have anybody that wants to be a part of it.
And I think that, two things. One, I think that can be part of the assessment, right? Two, I don't know if anyone else, when you were knocking on doors, asked about it. I asked about it. And I had multiple parents say, that would be really cool and I know my child would want to be part of that.
Okay.
So it's anecdotal, you know?
So, so like, what I would see, even perhaps before a task force would be established, unless you need the task force to create, like the survey?
Yeah.
That would be the first and foremost objective of a task force, as far as I'm concerned, is to create a survey, determine the distribution means of the survey, and then that survey would be, the, the goal of that survey, the objective would be to determine the, the efficacy of, of, of us, of youth council in the first place.
Right, because I think it can come back to say, we don't have the capacity in the town, it's, we don't have the interest, it's like not, I mean, I think that's, that's a perfect, perfectly reasonable response from the task force if it, like...
Sure.
You know, it's not that it's going to happen or it has to happen, it might be...
So, so sure then, so you establish a three-month, you know, long task force or four or five months, whatever you decide. And with the key being, you know, a timeline within that would be within, you know, 45, 90 days, whatever, you'd want...
The response, I think.
The, the survey to be completed, distributed, and the results tabulated and the determination of whether or not there's need for a task force to continue...
Right.
With the rest of the items.
Right.
That, that's my direction if, if, I don't know.
So I got a couple of questions. And when you were looking through the youth councils, was there any councils that you said, this is kind of what Sykesville should model? No? I mean, I looked at, I looked at...
We had this discussion.
I looked at the Brunswick Council minutes and there's really not much going on there. From what I could see from the minute, I shouldn't say minutes, the agenda, I didn't see the minutes, so...
And I think that goes to how you set it up to begin with, you know, and what the investment is. Like, we could decide, the only thing we want is, is a youth voice at specific things. So we might say, we're only going to convene it when we have an issue that we want a youth voice in, right? It doesn't have to be an every month occurrence. That's why I'm saying, I think the first step is to like, what do we really need? You know, do we want a youth voice in Warfield? You know, or whatever.
I agree. So if you're going to do the survey, I think you should definitely ask the kids, because the kids' parents always want them to do extra stuff that the kids don't want to do.
Correct.
So while your, while your, the parents said, oh, my kid would be great for that, I'm like, yeah!
And that's why we have to have the youth on the council to begin, you know, on the task force to begin with.
Yeah, and I, and I think...
And that recruitment, that's why I'm saying, like, give it until February to recruit for it, to get the word out that we're evaluating it and see if we can even get youth to help design it, right? Because that's the first question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I really don't see a need for it personally. I think there's a lot of youth involvement with Spark and the other organizations here. I don't think it's lacking in Sykesville. And I, I think people know that they could just come up here and knock on the door. I mean, they've seen Boy Scouts here, Cub Scouts here at the, at the meeting, so, but I, I would be interested to see what the survey says, as long as there's kids involved on the survey, like, the age group, you would definitely have to try to get the age group targeted.
Yeah, demographics at the front.
Yeah, yeah. Because the parents always want the kids to be involved.
And just the towns that have, or the cities that have youth councils now are just so much bigger than...
Well, there were two, that were Park and Brunswick, were the closest population-wise.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of looking at Brunswick and there was, I don't know why there wasn't any minutes or maybe I didn't like that far, but the agendas looked very, like, hey, we'll just meet type of thing, which is, which is okay, but you can get the, you can get the flow of a meeting.
Well, and that's the other question, like, I think it's in Baltimore City that it's a leadership training. So it's like, you know, six weeks in the middle of the summer where we could be involved in building the voice of youth, but not necessarily a year-long commitment. You know, so that could be another, another opportunity. And there aren't, you know, like, in, in our area, there aren't, we're the government. So if any youth wants to get involved, like, we're in. And I don't know, I mean, I, I think the organizations like Boy Scouts know how to, but I don't know that just, yeah, average Joe at...
The Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, that, the scouts that have been here are, as far as I understand it, are here as a result of fulfilling a requirement for a badge.
Right.
And, you know, that's a passive, one-time participation in, you know, observing how a town council meeting is, is run. If I'm understanding you correctly, the, the thing that you have in mind is, and the purpose that you envision having a youth council be in existence is to provide the youth the opportunity to not passively sit and watch a town council meeting, but actually have a voice to and from the town council...
Yeah.
In matters that they would have interest in voicing opinions on.
Yeah.
And so, because no one knows when those types of things will be on an agenda or when they will come forth, you know, you really do need to have kind of like a, if, if this is the goal, you would need to have a, a standing, you know, council or committee that would bring forth from that body a representative to participate when it's necessary or when it's desired on their part.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think any of us are looking to ask time of staff or time of really even the council in so much as perhaps there'd be a liaison to this youth council...
Right.
Should one be formed, who would be, serve as the point of contact for that group, right? And their meetings would happen, I would assume, in absence of members of the council and in absence of support of, of the staff, that this would be almost like a, I, I, am I correct?
So that's one, that's what we would need to decide.
Yeah.
So if that's a parameter...
It would be my parameter.
Then I think that like, you know, if there is no support for it, then I think sustainability's harder.
So I don't think, I don't mean that we want to see a value in it and that we want to support the existence of it and, and want to hear from the youth. I think, I'm very interested to know anytime and every time someone, whether, you know, 13 or 93, has to say about something going on in town, whether it's a service or, you know, why we're all here. But what I, what I am not interested in is, it would need to be an independent, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there wouldn't be support for it, I'm suggesting there wouldn't be, so there's like a staff liaison to each of our commissions, right?
Right.
That's something that I don't envision at this time being available from the perspective of a new commi, a new committee or a youth council, that there, unless it would be the liaison to the council that would be part of that. And that person would obviously be you while you're on the council. And we would need to basically, I think, be okay with, okay, the first several months of this or the first year of this would be the determination, almost a trial period as to whether or not, if it is determined that efficacy is there and the parameters that we, you know, are... would be the determination, almost a trial period, as to whether or not, if it is determined that efficacy is there and the parameters that we, you know, are comfortable with, will allow for it to come into fruition and, and last for, you know, a period of time that we could actually establish, right? In, in writing as part of the mission statement and so on. And then determine its, its life expectancy and if it is sustainable. I'm not sure that we would be able to determine if something like this would be sustainable without it actually
Running, right.
Happening for a period of time within the parameters that we're comfortable with.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And in terms of support, like, I don't think we can say to you, like, just go meet and then figure out what you're doing and tell us. Like, I think there have, there, everything I've read and get out of, from, there is some level of staff support in convening meetings or helping guide youth in like, this is how you set up the mission state, not necessarily being voting members on it,
Mm-hmm.
but definitely guidance and definitely mentoring and support. So there is a time commitment, I think, from staff or from, you know, the liaison or whoever is, so I don't think it's, that's what I mean by support, like, I do think there is a time commitment and a, some level of a budgeting impact in meeting space and in, you know, notes or staff or support or something like that.
So I think an objective of the task force would also have to include, um, who would be that adult for it to be sustainable? Not the name of the adult, but the role, like, will it be, um, a member of, you know, Century High and Sykesville Middle's PTA or will it be a, a member of the, the faculty?
Right.
You know, like, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that at this time we will have, um, with our current staff, the, the, that I don't see a staff liaison, um, at this time, but, but it may be, maybe it, it's, you know, a meeting every quarter or something, like, I just don't, I just don't foresee applying staff time, like, office hours and in that fashion to but I could be wrong, maybe there would be something that would come out of this that the task force is actually, not only creates the, um, the survey and determines what the role and goals would be for such a youth council. But if that youth council decides, you know what, we really want to be involved, not so much with municipal government, but um, we would be the voice when, when we're calling for that voice, that's who that, that's who would speak on behalf from a municipal government perspective, but I almost see this being more productive and more sustainable if it's got a project that it does every year. Whether that works with Century High School's homecoming, um, parade and that becomes something that, you know, but, but then the, there would be staff support for the parade planning, right? Like road closures, SPD to be involved, stuff like that. There's the intermingling, right, of the municipal government with something that is tangible. Um, and it's an annual thing, let's say, you know, or the I kind of like sit here and list things that are ideas right now, that's all that Sykesville meeting is about, but outside of that, um, I think the survey should include, like, is there, is there something that, you know, if you can identify as a specific list of, would you be interested in taking part in this annual, whatever it would be, that would require a co-mingling, crossing, right, of, of the municipal elected leaders, staff, SPD, so on and so forth? So that's my input.
I have a few questions and comments, um, is there a need? I don't know. However, I'd like to find out. I mean, if there is a need, this is a great way to solve it, so I'm I'm optimistic you're going to find out. I think this is a great idea to try to find out and operating from the assumption that some young people aren't showing leadership, I've seen it. On the other hand, some of the young people we'd see coming in before I retired showed a lot of leadership. They were a little bit older, so what I'm getting at is we need to find out if there is a need. We need to find out if there is a commitment and a commitment over time. Al's right, oh, my kid's dying to get into this. You know, as in, you have to go or I'm going to ground, no, no, let's find out. If you, if you get a hundred parents saying, oh, my kid's dying to do it, and one kid shows up, we have an answer. On the other hand, if ten parents say their kids are interested and eighty kids show up, drag on their parents, now you're in business, so. I think we ought to try this, and that brings me to my fourth point, I wrote myself some notes. I'm going to drop computer science for, I don't want to be isomorphic about this, meaning, here's how the structure's going to be and it's going to be this forever. We may need to expand and contract both membership based on, you know, who you have. This year, we got a lot of kids in the middle school, so we ought to move in this direction. Well, next year, we got a lot of kids in the high school, so, you know. See what I'm getting at? I, I don't believe us sitting here today can
Correct.
Build a brick structure that will meet our needs when we don't know how many people need to live in it. But we need to find out and that's what you're trying to do, so I'm all about it. And I gotta joke you out, I gotta kid you out. About your notes, you've read them, yeah, well, age appropriate. You know, I would hope that a bunch of fifteen-year-olds are not advising the president on his China policy with the military. So these minutes may be appropriate for them and we need to find out if they're living up to it. If this turns into a social club that makes kids stay out of trouble and become better leaders, that's a good thing, not a bad thing. And if, if I heard this correctly, our goal is to provide an opportunity for young people to become future leaders, we gotta try this. If it fails because they don't, it's on them. And if it succeeds, it's on them and we should help them. So I think we should do this, being aware again that we need to make this softer instead of hard boundaries and say, this is, you signed up to do this, kid, and I know you're twelve years old, but you're going to help with the graduation. No. So yes, let's, I want to do it, I want to support you on it. By the way, you, you bought this dog, now you've got to feed it. And you've got to take it for a walk. But I think you want to take the dog for a walk, so I don't see a problem there, so I say we do it. But knowing full well, it may, it may change shape, it may change form, it may expand and contract every year, but I think we ought to do it because having two kids, one of which was very sports oriented, oriented, and, you know, I was up every, every morning and Saturdays, and another kid who wasn't into sports, and there weren't a lot of opportunities for them. So I think this is another arrow in our quiver to say, here's something to make our kids better citizens, so I'm all about it. The council liaison, council representative for the task force, there you go.
I guess I have a few thoughts as well in reference to it. So a lot of us have kids, um, or have had kids kind of grow up in the community, and I certainly did, and my oldest is uh, extremely involved, like, way maybe over-involved. Uh, spent time on anywhere from ten to fifteen clubs at a time when she was in high school, looking for things to do. Had the opportunity to even put wreaths over at the, uh, uh, work with Springfield Hospital, there's an old hospital there, about nine hundred graves, uh, that a lot of people don't know about in the community, but, but it's there. It's outside of the town limits, but it's still there, she was able to work with their, uh, communication department and figure that sort of thing out. Um, she went with one other student, um, not with a lot of kids, even though that group had maybe fifteen in it. I've seen a struggle to get people actively engaged in these things for a long time, and this is her being in leadership positions and maybe five or six of those ten to fifteen different organizations. This, for me, to be a sustainable over a period of time, needs to offer something back to the town too, it can't just be about the kids. Right, um, I fully am engaged in a lot of different ways in my life in reference to mentoring and raising up leaders, I think it's really important to do, but it also needs, like, I know there, there'll be some citizens in the town that'll say, well, what are we getting out of it as well, right? And there's plenty of things, there's ideas that Stacy mentioned, there's plenty more that are out there, even simple things like cleaning up certain areas of town or, you know, getting rid of debris or wood or whatever. Uh, there's, there's areas all over the town that, uh, really any age in there could, could help out with. I'm a little concerned about the age range. Uh, there's a very large dichotomy of maturity in the age range that you mentioned, and the same daughter of mine now has interests in, uh, being a global leader and all this stuff and, you know, for her to, to kind of relate back, like, where she wants to be is she wants to be working with, with bigger entities and larger nonprofits and these sorts of things. And my guess is, is that there's, we, we have some very high potential youth that are in this age bracket, now in the college age, that are getting tremendous opportunities because of where they go, and we, we happen to be a fairly affluent community to be able to do that sort of thing, it's a fantastic opportunity that's there. I would think that this would work better for the younger community, where, uh, we would work with, uh, students in middle school and high school and, uh, start raising them up as young as we possibly can and be selling the town. You've heard me say, I don't know how many times to the chief, about community policing. Having a community policing sort of effort embedded into all of this, I think, would also be really helpful over a longer-term sustainability, so, bottom line of it all, I think it's, I think it's wise to go down the path. I don't know if there's a return, uh, a tangible return, there's a lot of intangible return, I think. I don't know if there's a tangible return, and I think there's, there needs to be a little bit of a tangible return for this to be something that all of us would grab onto. One other thing I saw in the document was that, um, that there's some budget considerations. And so as we think about the budget, like, I see the budget as our playbook for what are we going to commit to and what are we not going to commit to? And is this something that we would spend a thousand dollars for, five hundred dollars for, five thousand dollars for? And how committed are we? In order to have that sort of a commitment, I think you're going to need, again, I'm back to that tangible value back to the town, here's what we give back. I think there's a lot of ideas, a lot of brainstorming that could happen that'd be really positive. To be able to give something back to the town, I don't think it needs to be an equal give-back, but I would think that it needs to be something, so. Thank you for putting it together, it's a, it's a great idea. And, you know, it'll be interesting to kind of see how this plays out over the next, uh, few months. I would say that, um, I'm working on something outside of this space, um, and we're looking at targeting uh, kind of an assessment during this F, this school year FY for implementation in the next school year, just something for you to think about as you ponder a timeline.
Um, a couple of questions. Has anybody reached out to the other communities that have this in the state of Maryland and is it working? Is it, um, is there value in having a youth council in their community?
So I have not, I don't know if you've contacted any of, it's been more of a, right now, of
One line.
What's the interest, but I think part of the task force process would absolutely be doing that.
In my opinion, I think the first and foremost thing, is there an interest in the youth that want to participate? If, if two people want to do it, is it really worth their time and effort? It's a great idea, but if we don't have the people that want to participate, it's really a no-go. So, but if, if we have ten people, yes, that there's an interest, and then at that point, we can, the task force can come back and say, there, there's a strong interest. And then at that point, we can give them more of a parameter to say, okay, how, how is this going to work? How is this going to work for us? How is this going to be, uh, I don't want to say a mutual benefit, because just what, um, Jeremiah said, it doesn't have to be fifty-fifty, but we need to see some value in it. And that was it.
I'm done, man.
You're good? Yeah, thank you for putting this together again, really, um, it's very detailed. I, I guess I'm going to pair it, sort of what Jeremiah said, but the way it's presented as a youth advocacy task force, I could see him, see this not as them giving back to the town, but them saying what they want. I guess that's the disconnect that I'm getting right now, is as youth advocacy saying, well, this is what we need, this is what we're not getting out of the community, this is, you know, we want another skate park on the north side of town, you know, something like that. I, I don't see how it's going to be like a, a give and take, that's, that's my biggest concern.
The participation, so I think part of it is, when we get that youth voice in and we, we do put the skate park on the north side, right, then the expectation and the numbers that we would have to look at is, does that then decrease crime within youth? I think there, a couple of things are, there's not many opportunities for our kids. So you graduate high school here and you're moving to Hakers Town.
Moving to Hakers Town. That has more to do with the housing prices, but.
Well, but, you know, but there's also, you know, so what, I, in order for us to survive, right, we need to keep the youth here not farming out and then, you know, so I think, you know, what keeps, what would keep the young adults here, what would keep the, the high schoolers, what would decrease, you know? I know we don't have a lot of crime, um, but I know we've had concerns about, you know, a couple of kids having, you know, not having an avenue for them, so that's why I kind of like, you know, maybe it's not our traditional leaders that we want to engage, but maybe non-traditional provide more, more community engagement for those who are maybe on the freight, you know, and struggling and bring them in. But I think the, the vibrancy of the town gets enhanced when the youth get when they stay home and they stay involved in positive ways, like their community policing, you know, and that engagement. Would be my thought.
I think one other place to think about is, uh, it's something I've recently talked to Stacy about, is there anything that we can do in the town in reference to the arts? Uh, there's a lot of kids that are
Right.
Um, very interested in exploring that in different ways and it's an area that our town could continue to grow in and mature in. And maybe that's something that, that this group could look at, um, as something to explore.
Yeah, well, we have barrier free, I mean, we could have some of those youth be involved as well, you know, so there really is a diverse representation of the needs, I think, I, I wouldn't want this to be just another one, you know, if your daughter's already involved at fifteen, like, I don't want to give her something else to be involved in, I want to engage the youth who are not, like, to me, it's about engaging the youth who are not engaged, the voice we're not hearing. Get that to the table and then enhance the quality of life for everybody.
And so then the question is, is how do you do that? Because there's a lot of people trying to do that and try to figure out, how do I get to everybody? And that will require going to those folks and figuring out what motivates them, what inspires them, and then giving them an outlet in order to be able to do it, it's a very difficult thing to overcome, as you probably know.
Absolutely.
And so it's like that, that to me is a question that I didn't see, um, if that's where your real focus is. Because there's certainly some kids that, like my kid, that's just super, I'm going to do every single thing because I, I have a drive to go do whatever, and it's a very competitive, uh, atmosphere when you get to Century and it is in other schools in the area, private schools as well, and so that, that's your upper echelon, group of kids that tend to be involved in everything. And then you've got some other kids that aren't as involved in those things, so how, how do you get them engaged? And what are the things that they really care about?
Yeah.
You know? I don't know if there's gaming opportunities, if there's, you know, we had talked even, this is a while back, about, um, a, uh, a makerspace sort of concept, and I know these are ideas that are still out there that are percolating, but all of those sort of things, they're, they're different than what we, what traditionally is available in the community, and all of those things, maybe we'll get one here, one there, and, you know, I'd love to hear what the youth has to say in reference to what they want to see. We're on the verge of, uh, looking at possibly doing something in the Sandusky Building or in the Apple uh, Butter Factory, uh, building, I mean, what do the youth want? What's going to engage them, and it'd be, be interesting to hear what they had to say in reference to that as well. But we also have to keep in mind, they're youth, right? And so there's realities to things, there's budgets to things, there's timelines to things, there's stakeholder engagement, there's external pressures, there's all kinds of other things too. And so we have to keep all of that in mind, but it would be nice to hear what their perspective is.
So my ask would be, my suggestion, a, a, as much input on the recommended members, you know, just mentioning barrier free today, I think that would be an incredible, you know, outreach as well.
You mean for the task force?
For the task force. I would say six months, um, starting in February with advertisements and, you know, recruitment between now and then. If, if there's an answer in less than six months, then yay. You know, if there's a report halfway through, you know, and updates, I think. Um, you know, if there's a report halfway through, you know, and updates, I think that would be appropriate and helpful so that you would know and, you know, the council would know where we were and could provide guidance. Um, but then, you know, what are the parameters? So I hear, you know, the younger age, I know the college has a leadership program that we potentially could tap into. Um, you know, are there other feelings in terms of age or if everyone, you know, if it, if more of a feeling, kind of like Mark, what you were saying, just kind of open it up to the task force and have them come back and say, this is what, what we found.
I'm sorry, can I ask just a clarification question, really? Cause we had talked a little bit about, you know, doing a survey or something along those lines to see if there was interest in the youth in the community, whether or not this was something to even move forward with. And now we're back to talking about task force members. I was just a little confused as far as what is the direction from council and what do we wanna move forward with? And just to jumble, to kind of pile on to that same question is, uh, at what priority level are we supposed to put on this? Cause I, I was guaranteeing anything we're talking about here is going to have some sort of staff impact.
Yeah.
Um, so again, I, I, I need a little bit of that feedback from, from, from you all as to, you know, are we dipping our toe in the water and just doing like surveying? Or are we going full-on towards the task force?
I, I actually feel like the, the, an entire task force is not necessary to create a survey, to garner interest and, and, and some sort of direction as to whether or not, you know, it's, there's efficacy in this. Um, and so, I mean, it's as simple as, you know, I'm, I'm looking to garner interest by way of a survey as to whether or not there's, you know, um, interest in a, an advisory council to the mayor. And so I have an intern and she, a high school student by herself, under my supervision, has created a survey through Survey Monkey and we're gonna get it out to the, to the citizens and we're gonna see. But that's, that's, I think, at the root of what needs to happen first, um, for, for this concept, I think. And, um, I, I don't know if you want to engage an entire task force to create a survey to find out that, you know...
Survey Monkey.
So I, so I guess I would do, from my perspective and a point of whatever, would actually be to convene the task force so we get the voices to know how to engage and what the questions are. Cause I don't know what the questions would be that would fully engage the youth to answer it. You know, and just cause I sent it out, I don't know that, but if we have a group and we say, we're committed to this, we're willing to look at it, it's, it's of interest. And there's a middle schooler can say, I helped create that, guys, go fill it out. I think we get more, you know, people engaged in filling it out as opposed to like, hey, Lisa came up with something and sent it out.
So then Lisa, unless...
But that's my thought.
Yeah, no, it's fine. And unless you are willing to head that process up.
I am.
So if you're willing to head that process up...
You bought this dog, you gotta feed it.
Which is fine. I mean, I, I wanna know the answer, really.
Yeah.
I think this is great, do it.
I, 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 if, if you're, if you are looking from us, looking to us for a green light, to go ahead and gather a group of people together as part of a task force. Um, and you can do that independently. Um, and those individuals can gather to create a survey, to determine A, B, C, D, and E, whatever your goals are, um, which ultimately, you know, you need to establish a mission statement, right? Um, for the task force. So that then if you're, it does move forward, then the actual council, the advisory, the youth council would need to, you would need to create a mission statement for it. Um, the, the, the task force would do that together, right? Um, but this has to be happening kind of like in the background because from a priority perspective, um, I, I can say that it's been very enlightening becoming the mayor as to how many moving parts there are on a daily basis here in the townhouse amongst our staff. And from a priority perspective, I would, I have a list of about six things that would be of utmost priority that I think everybody at this table would agree are priority. Um, and are constantly being, you know, shuffled around from day to day as being first, second, third, third, second, first, you know? And something like this would literally have to be happening as a satellite that you would make your baby. And, and it would have to be determined if, if there's efficacy and if there is, then...
Mayor, I would even argue that they, if they cannot generate enough interest internally, then it, it shows there is no interest to do it. They need to run, they need to run this themselves and maybe your little toe gets wet once in a blue moon. Cause if they don't, if they keep trying to drag him under the water, it's failed.
Right, not including the, like, the recommended members, like somebody from the police force or somebody from Spark. Nothing, I, I don't think you can have that sort of...
At this level, in the process.
So I haven't spoken with Chief.
Okay.
And he wasn't vested and willing to, to add a voice to it. Um, I don't, my question to the others would be, you know, I think my concern is, again, if you make a questionnaire in too much of a vacuum, then it's gonna show, the response is gonna show it was made in a vacuum.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all.
But I don't know that we're talking a lot of meetings before that was...
That's my point. Like, I don't doubt for a moment that Chief Spaulding, um, sees value in being part of this process, but to what degree and what that commitment would be from him is, you know, um, what would be asked of him is something that I think we all would agree would, would be very minimal, particularly when creating this survey and creating these questions. So, um, and I think you'd have to be very sensitive to that. And I, and I know you will be, um, from the perspective of, you know, town staff, chief, policeman, whoever.
So basically, what I, when I think I heard you say, Leo, and you kind of helped it, which is, was also my thought, was like a smaller group initially. Um, and I think you could gain some insights by having people on from Carroll Community College as well as the high school and the middle school. I think if you can get their support, uh, that's gonna show something. Um, I think you'd also gain insights about the age issue, um, from those different groups. Um, and then maybe a couple of key youth. And maybe you can ask those entities, who would be the youth that they would recommend join? And then they could bring in and provide you some of those folks and maybe that's a good enough start. And then a way that you can, you can get the other opinions is you, once you build the survey, flip it out to some people and say, hey, can you take a quick look at it? Yeah. And that way, they're not in the group, but you're gonna get their feedback. I think what you would get is a lot of people saying, that all looks good to me. But that's been how it works for me when I do these sorts of things. But, um, but at least you get their, their opinions.
I mean, if it's identified through whatever level of this, you know, as, as far as you may get with it and hopefully it, you know, does turn into a sustainable, um, viable, um, living, breathing thing. Um, I, I was driving, uh, I was on the road today and, and I saw the sign, um, for the Boys and Girls Club of, I think I was just outside, somewhere between Laurel and Buddha, I don't know exactly where I was. And it's like, there's this huge vacant building in the middle of Warfield that's just crying for like, you know, apparently, you know, some sort of community use. The point is, is if, if that's what kind of thing comes out of what you, you're starting right now, fantastic. But that doesn't have to be something that continues through the, through our elected officials, through this body. Um, if, if, if that's the way it turns into and we can make it sustainable, fantastic. Um, but I think starting with a, a select group of people for a task force on, uh, from those groups that you listed and that we've kind of said, yeah, that sounds, makes good sense. I say start there and six months to get a survey created, uh, with the appropriate questions and distributed and back to determine if this gets legs, I think is great.
I also would advise, don't be afraid of sending it to someone with a, if you have something to add, please do. And if you don't, thanks. Because if someone says, I'm dying to participate, they will involve. But if you send it to someone else and they go, it looks good to me...
Yeah, that's, that's the point, you don't, that's feedback you don't look, you're not looking for.
Yeah, what I'm getting at, you don't have to put a gun to the head of someone who's anxious to participate. And putting a gun to the head of someone who doesn't want to isn't good either. So somebody might just surprise you, another, someone else might just say, whatever. Get the person who's interested and get their information, which goes back to one last point. You asked about only in the city? I listen to good ideas from everyone, but I only act on people who have portfolio. So maybe somebody who lives in Ellersburg wants to make a comment, we should listen, but if they live here, I care more.
Right, and that's, that's the question, right? The, it's a, it's a smaller pool of youth, more impacted obviously by the decisions that we make and those youth come into town. So like, how do you weigh that?
I listen to every good idea, but yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I mean, yeah, it was, it was a five-second pause there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Very nice.
Thank you for doing that research.
Yes. Are we adjourned? There was no vote.
Second.
I, motion passed unanimously.
Awesome. All right, so we'll run with it.